Special council meeting Wednesday, December 7th. All councilors are present. Manager Moser.
Good evening. Yeah, the only agenda item tonight we have, Lisa Soklavich, the Public Works Director, will be giving you greater detail, but as most of you know, we have an issue at the Branch Lake Dam. An issue that has been identified before, and we know that it has a leak. The leak has gotten considerably worse, and this fall, or summer, I guess, we, the state dam inspector came out and identified the leak, and identified it as being a, the dam essentially of being at substantial risk of a breach. The part that's leaking is the earth embankment, so the dam, and Lisa can certainly give you more specifics, but the photo that you have shows the earth embankment, which in front of it has sheet piling that's driven down into the earth. And you can see on that photo, virtually the entire length of the sheet piling has eroded away at the water level. The water level that you see in the photo is about two feet down from our typical water level on Branch Lake. And we had to draw, we had to drain the, draw down the level of the, of the water in order to prevent, to stop the leak from continuing, which, again, the state has, had identified as a strong potential for an imminent breach. So what's happening is the water is, is penetrating through the sheet piling and all of those holes that have rotted away. Behind the sheet piling, under the earth embankment, is cobble and gravel, and it's essentially, by working its way through the cobble and gravel, it's actually washing that substance out of the base of the earth embankment. The earth embankment has settled some. The sheet piling is leaning forward. It's supposed to be leaning back, it's leaning forward. And so, it's a problem, a pretty significant one. Solutions are, A, we can leave the water level down to the level which you see here in the, in the photograph, which is not a very popular decision with the folks that live on Branch Lake, or recreate on Branch Lake. And also will be a difficult proposition in the spring because of the runoff and so forth. Even with four, all four gates open, it would take some time to draw that river, to draw that water level down. To get it down to this two feet this fall, it took, what, about six weeks-ish? And, and we didn't really have a lot of, you know, obviously no runoff, or snow melt, or anything like that, so. So, in working with the engineering firm that has been hired to evaluate the entire dam, do engineering, and come up with a plan to long-term repair of the dam, the diving crew that came and dove on this earth embankment and sheet piling identified the leaks. Also, while we were there having a conversation with the engineer, also identified that they have done this type of temporary repair work before. And, so that's the estimate that you see before you this evening, to do a temporary repair. The temporary repair, in our conversations, is three to five years viability to prevent the leak, stop the leak from hap, from continuing, and washing away the earth embankment. This would allow us to bring the water level back up to our standard summer, spring, and fall level. We always drop the water level in the, in the winter months because of ice and so forth, but we, again, we usually, through the remainder of the season, have it up much higher. The temporary repair would allow us to have that water level fluctuation, and it would provide us three to five years of relief from this immediate problem as we continue to have the engineering work done, and the eventual plans to repair the dam permanently, and seek funding sources to, you know, to offset the cost of that. Whereas if we don't do a temporary repair, again, A, we could keep the water level down, which is not going to be a popular decision, or we have to move much more quickly with the permanent repairs. The temporary fix gives us a little bit more time to strategically plan and find resources to be able to do it in a cost-effective way. So, I'll turn it over to Lisa, and she can certainly probably provide more detail and answer questions, and I'm glad to answer any questions as well.
Yeah, I guess we'll start with questions, if anybody has them. I guess one of the questions that I know is gonna come up is why we're calling a special meeting tonight. So, in coordinating the effort to get this estimate, and meeting with the, the diving crew that gave us the estimate, they are booked, like a lot of contractors, from now until springtime, but because they know the severity of this, it's a three-day window, or three days of work that they need. And they said, the sooner we could get this approved, if somebody, some other job gets pushed back, or drops out, they would be able to get us in and get it taken care of as soon as possible. So, we're here tonight so that if that possibility comes available, we can jump on it and get this repaired before everything freezes up this winter. Because essentially what it is, is a, they have to dig down into the, the bottom of the lake, and it's a rubberized, I wanna call it mat, it's like a rubberized film slash mat, that they will drape over the corrugated metal, and then put stone and rock and everything, and gravel, and push it up against that to seal it off. So it does require things to be not completely frozen. They can, they can, you know, thaw a little bit of ice and a little bit of ground, but if, once hard freeze hits, it will be, it'll have to wait until things thaw out.
So, did we already know about this, or this we figured it out because of having, I guess I got confused about how we got, how we figured it out, because we had the engineering company coming in to look at the long-term plan, and they said, oh hey, actually, you have this other thing that needs to be fixed.
Nope, this was, this is the reason we started down this path. The, the, I guess urgency of it would be from the dam safety inspectors, which is included, it wasn't included in your package, but you got it in addition to.
And that's just something that happens periodically, and it happened, and they said, hey, this.
When, they only came to inspect it once we had already, they saw an Ellsworth American article, in which the Ellsworth American did an article on me coming and saying, we need money to do engineering, because we have a problem. And once they got, went to that article, then they were like, oh hey, we haven't inspected it, and so they went and inspected it. And so, after they inspected it, they came up with, on the last page of this thing I gave you, here's the problems, here's what you need to do to fix it. And now we are reacting to their list, when we were already in motion to get the long-term fix.
But I think, in, the, the leak was, we knew about the leak, but it's gotten substantially worse.
Right.
And that, that was the part that was kind of brought to our attention more so by the state inspection. We would've come to that conclusion, once the engineers had gone and done their inspection. They had done it, the, the previous work that the engineers had done was in the wintertime, and so they didn't, they didn't have any understanding of the severity of the leak. Then the state inspection came and did their inspection, and had acknowledged that the, they were aware of the leak, the leak had gotten considerably worse. And then when our engineers came, and we met with them there, they were in agreement that the leak had gotten substant, substantially worse, and that something needed to be done in order to prevent a failure, or prevent further erosion of that earth embankment.
And did we bring, is the water down, down now, because it always goes down at this time of year, or did we bring the water down as soon as we knew about this?
Yeah, we brought it down early, about, well, about.
Couple of weeks.
Yeah, about three or four weeks early.
Yeah.
In order to, response, you know, in, in response to this, this issue. Typically, they start dropping it down at the beginning of October.
October, yeah.
And we started mid-September, in order to, eventually, initially, with the water drawdown, we weren't sure at what level we were gonna have to go to in order to stop the leak, or minimize the leak. And then, once it, once it was drawn down, it became pretty obvious that there's no water level that's gonna be up to that sheet piling that's gonna be acceptable, I mean.
Yeah, it just has to stay down under it.
With, yeah, with the significant amount of decay that's there.
Does the state have to approve this temporary fix?
Not, to my knowledge.
So, I mean, does it meet their requirements?
It's, I think, they basically said employ a professional engineer, so the professional engineer would be the one to say whether or not, and this would be an acceptable fix. So.
Do we notify them when, when we do the fix?
Um, I don't think it requires us to, but I mean, we definitely can.
Yeah, we certainly, we certainly will, yeah.
How deep are they digging down, now?
I don't know, probably a few feet.
Few feet?
Have we tackled anything else, other than draining the level, in terms of their improved public safety checklist?
Yeah, we have a tabletop exercise scheduled for Monday, the TTX they're talking about, that's done through the fire department and the Hancock County Emergency Management and State Emergency Management. Maintain, that's what, number three is maintain the level until the dam is repaired, but we're gonna do that. Breach inundation maps, I believe, the, as the emergency, what's it called, coordinator?
EMA.
Yeah, the fire chief is working on that stuff. And we have, there was a lot of brush and trees on the embankment, and we have cleared all but the really large trees, which highway is going to help the water department do in the next couple of weeks. And we've had an engineer on board since before they put this together.
Great. Seems like a pretty niche job for this crew, and for, you know, the engineer. Have we looked into putting this to bid? Is there anybody else that can do it, or are we just assuming that there isn't?
This is kind of a specialty thing, like you said. The engineers we work with, are working with, are kind of the dam specialists for the state. And they didn't even know of anybody that did this kind of work. The divers, when they were out there, were the ones that said, hey, we, we've done this before, and explained to us what they had done. So even the engineers didn't know.
Where were they, where were they diving at? It's all dirt.
Oh, it was full of water when they dove it.
Oh.
This, this picture is after the drawdown, when they dove it, it was before that.
So they need to have underwater divers, so when they dig this down three feet, they can get down there and see, or something?
There won't, there won't be divers necessarily. They call them dive team, but it's really just, uh, it's three guys.
With shovels.
I mean, still some.
They hold their breath. No, 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 they're, they were, they, they are divers, and they did dive on it when the water level was down.
Right.
They dove on the, on the sheet piling, and they also dove on the dam itself, where the gates are.
The concrete.
To inspect the gates. So that was done, and when they were there, and we were having a conversation, after they came out of the water, after their dive, is when we had the conversation, and they explained that they do this type of work, this temporary repair type of work. So that's how that all transpired. But, the work itself won't require any diving.
Right. But they will have, they have the ability to do it, should they need to.
They've done it before, right?
Yes.
They've done this kind of work before. So, I honestly agree with you. This is niche work, and even if there is another person, and we put it out to bid, and we go through that two or three-month period, we're now gonna be into the spring, and you're gonna need to be putting the water up, and it's, you're just gonna put, delay the project for maybe a few hundred dollars. And, I, I personally think, doing this now, getting it done, and then giving us time to be proactive upon the fix, instead of reactive to everything, I don't think we, if I, the main office of dam, these are recommendations, they're not demands.
It's not, right.
Which is good, but it's good that you're doing it, anyway, because it, all around, it's good for everybody. But, I honestly think that waiting to, to go out to bid and go through that process, and you may or may not, because we're in a bad time of year, people have already get, there's so much construction going anyway, you probably are not gonna save money, and if you do, it's not gonna be that much, and you're just gonna delay a project. But, and I'm a person that always believes in going out to bid for things, but I think in this, we got a bad situation here that needs to be taken care of, for our water supply, and for, the only lake that's completely in Ellsworth that we're completely responsible for, so.
When do you normally put the water back up, in the spring?
It naturally does it over the winter. So we draw it down, so that as the snow and ice and everything melts, it builds itself back up over the winter.
And so if they, so you're saying, if we approve this and get it moving, then they can maybe fit us in before it freezes?
They're, they're gonna make an attempt to get us in before everything freezes up, yes.
And if they can't, then we wait till it thaws, and, but then we have to draw the water down.
Right, we'll just have to manage the gates more this winter than we normally do, and do the best we can, because even with all four gates open, if enough snow melt comes, it.
It'll still go up.
It'll still.
Yeah.
It won't go to full height, but it may creep up, you know, closer to that level of holes. The one thing that's to our benefit, and the engineers brought this up, is the fact that the earth embankment is large cobble, it's, it's based on large rock. So that's, thankfully, those large rocks are holding back the majority of the earth and the, and the steel sheets, as the smaller stuff erodes away.
In a previous meeting, you had talked about the gates, and the, that they're damaged, they're hard to maneuver.
Yep.
And that, this, there's a safety concern in terms of, are, did we implement anything around, especially if we end up having to manage it even more?
In the winter?
Like, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're doing a safety harness onto the railing. And, separate from this, but the same, I guess, is, there is one operator that's not operational right now. We're gonna have, while they're here for the three days, we're gonna have them fix that one operator, to get that one operational, but that's within his, or his authority. So, we're just gonna kinda.
You see, you don't have to ask us for that, is what you're saying.
Right.
Yeah, and the, the complete.
They're two separate things.
Yeah, two separate repairs. But the complete repair of the operators and the safety features, that's gonna be part of the bigger project.
Bigger project.
So, the fourth gate isn't operable right now, but we're gonna be repairing that separately. And then, there'll be more work to be done to all the gates, and all the operating mechanisms and safety procedure, features, that will come through with the full dam project. But in the meantime, we are using harness for the employee who's opening the gate, and two employees are going.
That's, ideally, yes, there's two out there. And especially come wintertime, if it's, it will be mandatory, yeah.
Councilor Hahn.
Could you refresh my memory a little bit here, on when the full project goes out? We're talking '24?
Probably late '23, early '24, by the time we finish engineering. We're scheduled to have the, sorry, we're scheduled to have the, the boring people come in and drill the, the test borings, to figure out how deep ledge is, or, or solid rock, so that the engineers can start their showing up next week, so.
One thing that I see here, is that, to Michelle's comment, it's, I don't mean to say 27,000 isn't a lot of money, but in the big scope of this project, a temporary fix today would benefit the landowners around Branch Lake that don't get many city services. It would also allow some breathing room, and it could be a more competitive environment in '24, with the economy headed down. We may recoup this 27,000 in the bid process, in '24. So, you know, there's a lot of benefits to doing this upfront. I'm not crazy about touching the ARPA funds, if that's where the money's coming from, but the actual project might pay for itself in competitive measures in '24.
So, since he raised it, so, this obviously is an unbudgeted expense, and so, it is a acceptable use for the ARPA funds, and, and I think in this particular case, where it's somewhat of an, an emergency situation, and a, again, unbudgeted expense that we were ill-prepared to fund in other ways, I think it's a logical use for the ARPA funds. The lake is not only our water source, but it's used throughout the community, as, you know, as a swimming location here at the dam. And I think that the use of the ARPA funds for this purpose would benefit a large, if not everyone in the community, a significant portion of the community, which is something that we, you know, when we talked earlier on, and when we've talked before about the ARPA funds, was something that we, you know, were, wanted to make sure that the money was, you know, we, we talked about possibly using it for, you know, for water projects, you know, and realistically, you do that, and that benefits the water customers. Does it really benefit, you know, the, the community as a whole, which is, you know, where we wanted to really focus those funds? And with this particular instance, I, I see this as being a project that does benefit the community as a whole. Not only our water source, so our, our customers, but all of the other citizens who live on the lake, and all of the citizens who go there to recreate. And in addition, the water source provides our, you know, our public fire suppression, and, so that's, that's a significant benefit to the community as a whole. And if this dam were to breach, you know, that, that raises a whole host of questions, with, you know, the down, down flow, all the way into Leonard's Lake, and, you know, has ramifications to a, a large portion of our, of our citizenry. So, for those reasons, I, I think this is a, a good expenditure for ARPA, and, so, which is why we were bringing that forward as a possible source to pay for the repair.
So, I guess, just a question on that, in terms of, with fund balance and year-to-date budgets, we had appropriated for roads, and there were several big projects that didn't happen. Water Street was supposed to be paved.
Well, that didn't happen, not because...
Well, it doesn't matter why it didn't happen, but what I'm, what I'm suggesting.
The money is not there, that's why it didn't happen.
So, I'm, I'm wondering, with our fund balance, if that's a better source, to draw 27,000, and allocate dollars out of, or reallocate dollars that unspent? Partly because, Councilor Hanson has raised the question about how, planning for the ARPA, and part of my concern is that we'd start to just spend it, things come up, and if we were, if we have funds, and so I guess that's ultimately my question, do we have available funds that taxpayers have already paid, that are not being used, that could go to this project? And if so, that, that might be an alternative to tapping into the ARPA funds before we really get into identifying where they should go.
Well, I mean, we, there are funds available, I mean, we can take it out of the general fund, it's not like the 27,000 is gonna, you know, break the city. So we, we can certainly fund it out of the general fund. But, you know, I, again, I, I think that with the situation with this particular project, I think that, you know, we have 800,000 in ARPA funds. This seems to me like a good expenditure for ARPA funds, and doesn't deplete the ARPA funds to the point where we can't continue to, to, you know, plan for the use of, of those additional funds. But yet, provides us a, a, a way to pay for this without, you know, cutting into the general fund, or, or fund balance that, that remains within the city.
Well, I was gonna say, kinda similar thing to what you said, I mean, it seems like this thing should and must be done, but I'm also a little bit uncomfortable with just the ARPA funds sit there, and then when we want something, we take out of it, rather than planning. But I, so maybe the general fund, and I also wonder, what's our relationship with Hancock County's ARPA funds? We're in Hancock County, they got a ton of money, and I just don't know when we're a big city in Hancock County, what would be the process for ask, asking to access that? I don't have a sense of Branch Lake, like, is it a lake for the county? Do all kinds of people in Hancock County come and use it, and recreate on it? In which case, would it be reasonable to ask Hancock County, and how would that even work?
So we've talked about approaching Hancock County with, for the full dam repair, funding, potential funding for the full dam repair. But the way it would work is we would have to get on the agenda for the commissioners' meeting, and go in front of the commissioners with a request, essentially for them to use some of their ARPA fundings for this, or, or any project that, that the city wanted to be putting forward. So for this particular purpose, in this situation where we're hopeful to get this approved, so that the crew could show up tomorrow, if, you know, if their schedule allowed, going through the county would be, you know, would probably be detrimental to that, to that process, because I don't know when their next meeting is, and when their agenda closes, and that sort of thing.
But we can think about that for the bigger.
Yes, Lisa and I have, have talked about that, and, and as one of the potential funding sources for the full repair. Because the dam, you know, the, it is a water source, our, our water source, obviously, so that's, you know, I mean, we have the, the most at stake, if you will. But it certainly is used by, by residents throughout the county. And the argument I've made all along with the county and the ARPA funds is that Ellsworth is a part of Hancock County, we have 8,500 residents that live in Hancock County, we pay county tax, and, so even if we have projects that are suitable for ARPA funding, it would seem as though we would be eligible to apply for and receive funding, part of that funding from the state, from the county. So we do plan to, to utilize that as a potential resource for the major repair, which, I mean, we don't have any idea at this point, what that's gonna look like, or what that price tag's gonna be.
Going back to the, the company's proposal for the project, was there any sort of guarantee or warranty on the work? They said three to five years, plus?
I don't think it's a guarantee. I think it's, you know, they've done it before, and it's lasted that long. I don't know that there's any, you know, sign-on-the-line warranty.
I'm sure they said it should last three to five years.
Well, they actually said it should last five.
It's like a road or any construction, they can't guarantee it.
Right, right.
They said longer, but our intention is.
Five years or less.
It's reasonable to be hopeful that it'll last long enough for us to do the big project.
Right, we, we're reasonably comfortable thinking three years will be fine.
No, I didn't say anything, no, I was thinking, I'm sorry.
You know, I, I support this 100%. You're giving, you're giving high-tax property owners that don't get regular services at Ranch Pond, the proper levels. It's obvious that it needs some help, in the big scheme of things, it's a small amount of money. But again, I hate to tap those ARPA funds, I, it's gotta be, the project needs to be done, it will, we'll save that in the competitive measures in '24, I'm certain. Maybe, maybe not, but if, it, there's a good chance that some of that's gonna come back to us in competitive measures, when the economy is a little further south than what it is.
Can you explain that, though, what you mean?
What I mean is this, right now, you, you, you're lucky to get anybody to talk to you to do anything, okay, in that world. And in... And in twenty-four, when the project goes out to bid, my guess is it'll be a more competitive nature. There'd be less projects out there and you may have, uh, some savings with economics, um, that you won't have today. That's where I'm coming from.
But that's not related to whether we do this fix or don't do this fix, that's just a timing.
No, my thing is this, is that this twenty-seven thousand, if we spend it today, we make, uh, Branch Lake like it's supposed to be, um, for the next three to five years, that gives, uh, some time to put the big project together. And in that timeframe, um, it may not be as competitive as it is today. And, um, we may, uh, realize a better price.
If, if I may too, if it's, if it's not done where you have to do it in an emergency situation, um, you can wait for better timing. You, you're not going to take a price that's higher because you have to. Um, you can look for better funding. There's a lot of things that you can do if you've got three years and, and you, you're right, the twenty-seven thousand dollars. I mean, you could have a project that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars more than it should be because you're, you're in a competitive process in a very non-competitive time, you know, and so, um, it does make.
Just buys you the freedom to.
It buys you the freedom to, to put it out when you think is best and when you need to, not, uh, when you want to, not when you need to, absolutely.
To reiterate, I, I'm just against tapping the ARPA funds because, um, it, it, it's like taking bonus money and buying groceries with it. You can't see what you did with the ARPA funds.
Is there any encumbered water funds from the capital accounts? I know at one time there was a couple of line items on there for water projects. That, that's money that we would have already collected. And do you know what their retained earnings is in the water department? Because you can borrow against your retained earnings in the water department too, rather than taking out of the city's general fund.
Personally, I think I would, I would rather, I'd like to wait until the audit's back and we have a clear view of what, what we have for encumbered funds and, um, grants and, you know, capital funds that are, that are sitting out there and see what the encumbrance is. It's the only reason why I, I just keep thinking whether or not we should use the general fund because, uh, we don't have the audit back to tell us how much we really have in unencumbered general fund monies. But that, you said that's supposed to be back within the next couple of months, right?
Yeah, wow.
That's what they said, yeah.
If they do the project, they ain't going to want to wait two months.
No, exactly, that's, yeah, no, that's, that's why I'm going back and forth between the arguments of ARPA and.
We know that you can get it from the ARPA funds, right? We know that for sure. We know we all want to say, hey, let's do the project if we wait. You need to know so they can get to work on it next week if they have a cancellation, right?
Correct. That's why we're here.
Do we have to say where we're going to get the funds from?
Yes, it has to be part of the motion.
So I don't know, I mean. We know there's plenty of money in the general fund? For sure? A hundred percent?
Yes and no.
Okay.
The, the money is there.
So we know the ARPA funds and we're going to use them and we know a hundred percent for sure, we can.
Absolutely, yes. There's absolutely no hesitation whatsoever that the ARPA funds exist and this is an acceptable use.
So, my only thinking is, you spend the twenty-seven thousand, Steve has a good point, later on it might come back. But I mean, we're going to use that money for something and if we have to just put the twenty-seven thousand, we'll have to take out of something else to.
Well, it'll go into.
We've got to pay for it now, so we know we can use that now.
If somebody makes a motion, we'll find out where, where the money's going.
You want me to do this? I can say this.
It was very subtle.
To approve the request of the Public Works Director to contract with BMC Diving Incorporated to complete temporary repairs of Branch Lake Dam, work to be completed with a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-seven thousand to be funded from the ARPA funds eight-five-dash-four-zero-zero-zero-two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
I, I only say it because if we don't know we don't have it in the general fund a hundred percent positive, then we should just do it this way.
It's a fair point and, um, I, you know, I, I just hope that we, that we don't keep going back to it. I, I hope we just keep that in mind as we go forward.
Right, no, I agree.
As a counsel with the ARPA funds, I, I certainly, I think we, it's a valid point and, and that's really your point in terms of getting the audit and really knowing where everything is, makes sense before we, we start drawing down from it.
If I do one hundred percent for sure, we have that in the general fund, I would say take it out of that and pay it back. If we don't know a hundred percent for sure, we do know.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to remind everybody that in the October meeting, we took over a million dollars out of, out of undesignated surplus for the police project. And I just would like to point out that if that's okay, I would think this would be okay.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? One opposed, motion passes. Item three, adjournment. All. We are adjourned.